Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Hunt, call the May 11th Council Study Session to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comments opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. I will also be sharing a summary of comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichele?
Here.
Here.
Thanks. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall has an excused absence this evening. Councilmember Mart?
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comments. And if there is anyone on the call now who would like to make a public comment but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. And if you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hands icon. This may vary by device, and one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hands icon in the lower right-hand corner. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No one has signed up to speak in advance. I do see we have one member of the public who's joined us, but at this time, they are not indicating a desire to make comments.
Okay. Thank you. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. And with that, I will also do a summary at this time of comments that we've received relating to tonight's agenda items. We did receive several comments, and I think a few of them relate to a couple of the agenda items this evening. While we're doing virtual meetings, I've been summarizing email comments that we receive on agenda items that we're discussing. So, we received a comment around a concern around the proposed light rail alignment for Issaquah. I think this relates to one of the CIP projects, and we are discussing the CIP project, the CIP plan this evening with ID 0830, Capital Improvement Plan, including Transportation Improvement Program. This person was concerned about a survey that went out around the light rail alignment and the TR-03, which is in our plan, also has to do with sound transit and coordinating with sound transit. We also received an email asking us to include the community meeting notes on the CIP, which we have since done. And then we received a couple of comments that relate to both storm water, storm and surf water, storm and surface water master plan, and storm and surface water projects that are in the CIP. One is around, one comment was around beavers, and one of the projects in particular that has to do with flood control and the impact of beavers, which was ST 048 relating to the Pickering Ditch Project. And then there's also emails that we, email that we received regarding the Spar Booster Pump Restoration and the need for more restoration around that project and more natural area, as well as a concern around the project's trail system. And that concludes the comments that we've received that relate to this evening's agenda items that we've received since the last time we discussed the various items on tonight's agenda. So with that, we will go on to our next agenda item, which is ID 0859, Environmental Stewardship Initiatives, and this will be presented by several people. I think I'll, I think we start off with Megan Curtis Murphy, Senior Sustainability Coordinator.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Megan Curtis Murphy with the Office of Sustainability, and I'm joined this evening by Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling. We're going to provide a brief overview of some of the environmental stewardship initiatives for the city. We'll be speaking to a couple of the items this evening that are happy to answer questions about others that are mentioned in the materials tonight as well. Jeff will get started this evening talking about the Green Issaquah Partnership, and I'll share some highlights from Earth Month and provide an overview of the city's climate action plan. So we'll go ahead and pass it to Jeff and his team now.
Great, Megan. Thank you. Good evening, council. Great to be here. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director with the City of Issaquah. Unfortunately, Matt Meckler is not able to join us tonight, so you've got myself and Joanna Nelson de Flores from Forterra who will provide this update. Before I hand it over to Joanna, though, I just wanted to provide some background as to this program and really the origin of this work. In the 2018 Park Strategic Plan, one of our operational strategic goals within that plan was looking at creating and launching a Green Issaquah program to be part of the broader Green Cities Initiative that Forterra started a number of years ago. With that work in 2019, council authorized some funding. We took that funding and leveraged it with some grant dollars we received from the King Conservation District and started this work. The first phase of this work was to really do a forest assessment and begin to do some planning around the condition and the state of our city-owned public forest, and identifying really some priorities and strategies. That work went through 2019. We were able to provide council with an update in late 2019 on that work. As the pandemic hit in 2020, that work continued, culminating in the attached implementation guide that really, I think, represents a great deal of work that happened and some community engagement around, around this work, and really serves as the foundation for the program. The exciting point that we're at right now, and I think the timeliness of this update, is we're now beginning to pivot into operationalizing this work. This just wasn't a one-and-done, let's create a guide, but it's really intended to become an embedded part of our park operations team, our park maintenance team, and how we maintain and steward our natural forest lands that we're responsible for. So, exciting timing, exciting time for this quick update. With that overview, though, I'll hand it over to Joanna Nelson de Flores, the Restoration Stewardship Managing Director with Forterra, and someone who's been a great partner in this work. Joanna?
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, so, next slide. I'm just going to give you all a little overview. I know a lot of you are familiar. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at the guide, but just sort of to remind us of sort of, you know, why this program's so important. Of course, there are a long list of benefits that urban trees, forested parks, natural areas provide our communities, habitat for wildlife, clean air, water, shade in our hot summer months that are coming up. I can't wait. And also just, you know, a long list of physical, mental health benefits. And so, we know that we need these forests in our city in order to have a good quality of life. Next slide. So recognizing these benefits and the need for healthy urban forested parks and access to nature, Forterra has developed the Green City Partnerships to create a sustainable network of healthy urban forests throughout the Puget Sound. So this is a map here of all of our green cities. Each of these 15 participating communities, we've sort of gone through the same process that Jeff just described. All these cities are all-in and committed to managing their forested parks and natural areas, recognizing the assets that they are to their community. And so, these combined, we're collectively have a goal of restoring 13,000 acres. To date, we have cities that have been working on these programs for 16 years and others that are just starting, like Issaquah, and there's a great opportunity to learn from all of those. So know that Issaquah is invited to the network, right? This table of cities that have been doing this work and can share and sort of the challenges and opportunities and folks that, things that, that, you know, what someone's figured out in Tacoma might be able to help solve a problem in Kirkland. And so that's one of the big benefits, and they've all kind of gone through the same process. Today, the program's been pretty successful. We've had over 1.5 million hours, and we track this across the whole network. So everything that Issaquah is doing will feed into this larger regional goal. Next slide. So all, all of these programs share that they are community-based stewardship programs. So that means when it comes to getting folks outside and engaged, it's really at the root of the program. So, all Green City Partnerships have, you know, a forest steward program, and they also have, you know, have opportunities for schools, companies, individuals, families to get involved in this work as they have capacity to do so. So, it's everything from pulling out ivy, digging out blackberry roots and planting trees, and everybody working together to help transform their community neighborhood parks and natural areas. Next slide. So Issaquah, Green Issaquah Partnership is joining this network of cities. And this is not new, from what I've learned, for Issaquah. Issaquah actually has a long history of conservation and stewardship, which really just made this a great partnership, because we weren't starting from scratch. And that's, that's really the best. It's, it's, it's when we can bring a program to an area that already has a lot going on, and we just need sort of some guidance and some framework and a program to put all that energy into. So, that's what the Green City Partnerships, I think, are really helpful in doing. So overall, the, the main, main outcomes we're looking for from this program is to just improve that urban forest health, increase livability and quality of life, and to do that by actively engaging the community in this work. Next slide. So as Jeff mentioned, we started this process out back in 2019 with a forest assessment. We, we did bring some initial results to all right after we got them. But just as a reminder, this program is really focused on what we sort of refer to as forested parks and natural areas. So that's about 1,540 acres that were mapped and included as sort of the scope of this program. Next slide. And some of the results you'll find in the plan, I did want to share some good news. Actually, in comparison, not that we have to compare cities, but you guys actually have really good forests. It's really beautiful, really amazing. Overall, when you look at categories of high, medium, and low invasive cover, you have, most of your acres are actually in low invasive cover. And what that tells me is not that we're off the hook necessarily, that there's nothing to do. It actually means that now is the time to be ramping up efforts, so we don't wait until it becomes a bigger problem. So that was really what we found when we looked at, looked really closely at what was going on in, in the parks in Issaquah. Again, next slide. We take all of this information that helps, we plug it into some, some, a matrix that helps us prioritize where we should work. It also helps us figure out how many acres you have that are really good, how many acres need a lot of help, and then how much, you know, time is that going to take, volunteer hours? What are our goals? What are we working with, right? You've really got to know what the state is of the, the forest if you're, if you're going to be able to manage it. So, we've been tying all of this information, this, this chart that I showed back in 2019 really just shows that you have a lot of acres in that really dark green, which means really good shape. And then that purple is sort of high invasive threat and sort of lower canopy value. Those are your sort of worst-case scenarios. So we want to move all of these sort of acres in these boxes up to that high dark green area with really high forest canopy value and low invasive threat. Next slide. So you can read all about this. There's so much more information in the 20-year implementation guide that we're really excited has finally been released. I have a box of them printed that I'm going to be getting out to someone, to get out to you all, so you have them that you can put in your hand and look through. But this really is, this takes all that forest assessment results, does a lot of analysis, input from the community that we did also back in 2019 to craft this guide. And this will just really be that roadmap to the implementation of this program, has all sorts of benchmark strategies and goals for the program. Next slide. Just wanted to emphasize that these are true partnerships. It really takes a partnership. While it's a citywide effort, you know, the city can't do it alone. So, it's going to take many helping hands. So the Green Issaquah Partnership does build upon the work that many groups have done to date, such as Mountains of Sand Greenway or Issaquah Alps Trails Club, and really sort of bring all of that effort under one umbrella so that the city can really track and have a good idea of what's happening out there. And so, we have a great beginning, and we look forward to adding more schools and community groups to this list of partners. Next slide. What I'm sure everybody's been waiting for is, is when we actually get to get our hands in the dirt and start doing some of this fun work. So, we did put a lot of this, there were no volunteer events last year due to COVID, but we hosted two forest steward orientations. So forest stewards are community, community leaders that take on sort of adopt a park. And so we have five that have started and five more that just went through orientation that are interested in taking that next step. So that'll help us meet our first goal, 10 forest stewards in the first year. Really remarkable, actually. There's a lot of community interest in Issaquah for this program. And then there's also, you know, a long list of other ways that folks can get involved from stewarding your own backyard, if you neighbor a park or live anywhere within the city. That's also really important to, also, you know, be looking for corporate sponsorships, donations, that sort of thing, and just getting out and enjoying the parks. That, that's what it's all about, right? We, we do this work so that we have easy access to healthy nature. So, we really want people to benefit from that. I did want to, next slide, just make sure you all know that, you know, there still are, we still are dealing with the effects of COVID, but we are beginning to start scheduling events. And so you should start seeing, sometime in June, we'll start hosting some public events. We actually did have two events so far that were led by forest stewards and through the Issaquah Alps Trails Club. So it was very exciting, sort of our two first official forest steward-led Green Issaquah events. And they filled up. I think they had about 10 people at each of those. But we are, we do have protocols in place to make sure that these are safe events, that people are still masked, and we're taking proper precautions for public safety. But do look forward to more opportunities coming this summer and then in the fall as well. So, I think with that, that's my update.
That's great, Joanna. Thank you. Certainly available for, for questions or comments now, or if we are waiting until Megan is done with her update as well. Thank you so much, council, for your support in this exciting program. It's just getting ready to launch.
Thank you. I do see we have, Councilmember DeMichele would like to make a comment.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele, and I'll be very brief. I, and I already emailed Jeff and let him know, I just think the implementation guide is excellent, A+. It's so chock-full of really good information, and I really look forward to getting copies of that and distributing them to people in the community who I know will be very interested in getting involved with the stewardship program. But I was, I just read through that guide, and it was just fascinating, all of the good information that's in it. So thank you very, very much.
Great. And I am not seeing any other questions at this time, and so I think we can proceed.
Great. Thank you. So moving on to something related, where we even have a picture of one of those Green Issaquah events. But we had a busy April in Issaquah with several Earth Month events. So I just wanted to share a few photos and highlights from that time. In the first photo there, the city hosted two events and distributed over 100 rain barrels and 60 compost bins to support environmental stewardship in the city. We received these through regional grants and were able to give them out to a lot of residents. I was at both events and got to see several familiar faces. You know, we were all masked, but it was great to see a lot of folks there. We also teamed up to share information on a bunch of partners' events. So the top right photo there is from one of the Green Issaquah events that Joanna was just talking about, that was hosted by the Issaquah Alps Trails Club. And they had about 10 volunteers removing invasive plants there. Friends of Lakes and Mammoth State Park hosted both restoration events and an Earth Month walk in the park, which is pictured in the bottom right there. And the Downtown Issaquah Association hosted their annual Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day. So it's great to have so many residents involved in these events and others that occurred throughout the month. I'm now going to provide a brief overview of the climate action plan that the city's working on, and I have a couple of questions at the end as an opportunity to provide some early input on the project. So first off, we've selected Cascadia Consulting Group to help us put together the plan, their local consulting firm, and have worked with several neighboring cities on their own plans, including Redmond and Bellevue recently. And along with the consulting group, and even more importantly, we have a group of dedicated city staff from several different departments helping out with the plan. And the timeline for this plan is short, from April through December. But there's a couple of reasons why we planned it that way. So first, through discussions with the community and council, we heard that actions to reduce emissions are the most important thing to focus our time and resources on those actions themselves. The city has been engaged in several initiatives previously, from enrolling in Green Direct for renewable electricity to the Issaquah Solarize Campaign, and most recently, the electric vehicle charging ordinance. So the focus has been on action thus far. The second reason the timeline is short is because we've done a lot of work already to get us started. So as you know, last July, the community put forward a list of recommendations for how the city and community should address climate change. The first of that was developing a climate action plan, so we're doing that work now. And the other recommendations will now be evaluated through that climate planning process. The city will also leverage much of the planning work that we've already done with the Mobility Master Plan, the Sustainable Building Action Strategy, and the Park Strategic Plan. And through the implementation of these plans, we can be intentional in how these actions will help the city reduce emissions and reach our climate goals. Last, there are a lot of partners and resources and tools that we can use, such as the King County Cities Climate Collaborations Climate Action Toolkit, and also lists of other actions from community groups working on climate. So what we need to do now in Issaquah is select those actions that are specific to our population, our building types, our businesses, and our land use patterns, and develop a framework to get the work done. This slide is a brief overview of the scope of work to be accomplished. The first item is a review of background materials, which we just talked about with the inputs into the plan. Next, we'll set targets and goals, and the consultant will use our previous inventories to forecast emissions and recommend the targets to get us there. Step three is to understand the community values and engage them in the work. Again, this is something we already started last year when we brought the community together for the convening. We'll develop a community engagement strategy that will involve both internal and external stakeholders. We'll include boards and commissions, reconvene the community, and of course, city council and staff. At the first convening, we had representation from a wide array of stakeholders, including community groups like People for Climate Action, industry groups like Master Builders Association, businesses with Costco and the Chamber of Commerce, and our utility partners with Puget Sound Energy and Cascade Water Alliance. So we'll continue to engage these groups throughout the process and continue to hear from diverse voices to help inform our policies and our actions. Which brings us to the next step of developing the strategies and actions themselves. We'll start with a wider menu, and then we'll work to assess and prioritize so we have a more focused list for the city. And the final step is preparing the roadmap, which will be the draft and final plan, as well as a detailed implementation plan, calling out specific leads, partners, and timelines. So I have a couple early questions to help guide our work. So councilmembers are welcome to throw in any input they want or answer these questions if you're interested at this time. The first one is what are the most important areas to focus on in the plan? And the second one is what does successful public engagement on the plan look like to you? So we'll have opportunities to provide input in the process. Throughout the planning process, we'll come back to council later this summer and have more opportunity. But I'm welcome to take any early input if you have it now. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, does anyone have any questions or feedback on this topic? Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. First, I didn't get a chance earlier when the folks from Forterra were here to just fawn over all of that report, and I'm just going to go back and read it over so very many times. So I wanted to make sure I commented and said that I appreciated everything about it, the content, the design, the thoughtfulness. It was just wonderful. As far as the specific questions about climate action, for, because I had gotten a chance to work with K4C on the Climate Action Toolkit, success for me, it looks like we let the environmental board and community fill that out and come to some decisions and get straight to actions. I think you're absolutely right. You've heard from the community, we want to focus on actions, and I think we have a clear path and process to do so. So engagement, from my mind, means really focusing on the environmental board and using that as a method for community engagement. But I would like to specifically request that we have at least one session that focuses on youth and getting in contact with the local high schools and middle schools to encourage some community feedback in that way, because the youth care about this a whole heck of a lot, and they're going to be the ones affected by it. And I think it's important to do a specific reach out and not just expect them to come to any meeting. So I would encourage that point. But all in all, great. Looking forward to it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I'm seeing some more councilmembers that do want to make comments. I did want to make sure that we also call for public comments. It looks like nobody has any questions. I will just give a moment. If any councilmembers have any questions, if you could indicate in the chat. Not seeing any. So before we go to the rest of the comments, I'm going to check in with the city clerk. City clerk, has anybody indicated a desire to speak on this item?
No, but I'll just make a quick announcement and ask that anyone who's attending who wishes to make comments, you could raise your virtual hand by pressing the small hand icon. You may find it in the participant panel on your computer, can be in various locations depending on your device. If you're, it doesn't look like we have anyone participating by phone, so we'll just monitor this list for a moment to see if we have anyone wanting to make comments. And I'm not seeing anyone indicated a desire to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will now go to Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, and thank you, Megan, for the public engagement. I certainly agree that the youth and the environmental board should be a part of that. In my opinion, the environmental board shouldn't be the funnel for that. I think we need to have separate and specific outreaches and invitations and meetings for many different segments of the community. As we heard in our last effort, the business, business community, for whatever reason, was not heard prior to, to when we adopted the EV charging ordinance. That was a significant miss. So I think we need to make sure that we get them in, involved, and not just post meetings and just sort of expect them to be involved. And then I think there are a lot of folks that we need to reach out to, as Councilmember Walsh said, the youth. But I also think there's, you know, we should make a list of all the different folks in our community we could reach out to, nonprofits, low-income, people who don't speak English. Just, there's just a whole list of people that we should be reaching out, reaching out to and getting involved in, in the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. My comments echo what's already been said to some degree. You know, it is called an action plan, so I would say again, along with other councilmembers, that we need to focus on action and urgency. Under public engagement, I think when you're reaching out to the public, there needs to be a clarity of process. And by that, I mean, if I'm a community member just coming in, I'm being asked to provide information, I want to know, how does this fit with the environmental board? How is the council involved? Where is my, where are my comments going? Where are my comments going? And how am I impacting the plan? And so I think those things need to be very clear because we've got a number of players that are going to be involved in the final approval of this plan. And I think it could be very confusing to the public unless we start off by framing it in, this is where you are in the process and this is how we're going to get to the end. I will repeat the words that have already been said, that we need to do outreach to our minority communities and young people for sure. We need to provide language assistance and interpretation, I think, in some of those instances, or else we won't be hearing from those groups. So we need to think really broadly about how we bring the whole community into the dialogue. And then again, focus on action. How do we use our outreach as a way to energize our community to take actions that slow or stop climate change right here in Issaquah? The purpose of the outreach, of course, is to get input, but we can also use it as a way to energize our community and set up or tee up future volunteer opportunities. So those are some of my comments, and thank you very much for asking, Megan.
Okay, thank you. I will make some comments. So this is Council President Hunt, and then I'll also summarize what I heard from council. So for my personal comments, I think that the Green Issaquah, again, just to echo what some other councilmembers said on this, it's very exciting. And we heard during the strategic plan process that there was this desire for community members to get more involved. And this is one way that they can do that as a volunteer. And so that's really exciting, and I think gets us closer to some of the ideals in the strategic plan in the environmental stewardship section of that plan. While we do have, I think, a very healthy forest, as was mentioned, we do still have a lot of development pressure on our forests, and it has come to our attention before that we have, for example, root rot, and that's exacerbated by development pressures. And so we, while I think, because in part, we have a community that does value our forest so much, I think we also need to make sure we don't take that for granted. And I think having this Green Issaquah will help us continue to be good stewards of our forests. I also know that there was an urban forestry bill. House Representative Bill Ramos was one of the people who worked on that, and that also has some resources available for guidance and grant money for forestry. And so that could be another resource that might be integrated into our forest management plans in the future, and is an exciting development from this last legislative session. And then on the Climate Action Plan, I think in my reading of the last convening and of the comments that we received so far, prioritizing doable actions, making sure that we have a list of things we can accomplish in a given timeframe, and really prioritizing with that in mind is very important. A lot of actions are possible. And the toolkit, for example, that was mentioned, has lots of possible actions. And so I think, for me, the focus really needs to be helping us have a plan that takes all of these possibilities and formulate something that we can accomplish with that community support and community grounding. So those are my comments. And I will now summarize some of the other things that I heard. So council, if you hear something that you think wasn't the consensus of the council on this or that I missed the marks, then let me know. I heard a lot of support for the Green Issaquah program, the implementation plan in particular. And for the two questions for the Climate Action Plan, on the focus, I heard a lot about public engagement, I think also for the public engagement question, but really just wanting to make sure that we reach and hear from all segments of the community, business community, youth community, and also that we have just a very broad strategy for making sure that we hear lots of different voices, having materials and presentations available in different languages, and really making sure that we hear from lots of perspectives. I think that that was the main takeaway from that, and of course, focusing on what are the most important for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in terms of the actions. All right, councilmembers. Anyone else have any comments on this? Or I will move to the next item, assuming that you have what you need for this item in terms of comments.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you all for those presentations. Next, we will move to ID 0612, which is the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan Update. And this will be presented by Gary Schimmick, Utility Engineering Manager, and Alan Quinn, the Senior Stormwater Engineer.
Hello, councilmembers. I don't know about you, but my screen looks like it's flashing a little bit.
Yes.
Let me try to do something here. Hopefully, that worked. Thank you. Try it again. Take two. Good evening, city council. I'm very, very excited to be here today. Let me just share my screen, and we'll get started. Okay, just checking to make sure everybody can see my screen. And it should say Storm and Surface Water Master Plan Update. Excellent. Okay, as I mentioned, my name is Gary Schimmick. I'm the relatively new Utilities Engineering Manager here. While I've only been here about 90 days, I have been in the water resources and environmental engineering field for nearly three decades. Prior to joining Issaquah, I served as Utilities Manager for the City of Redmond in Washington, not Oregon, for six years. And then Senior Manager with Seattle Public Utilities for about 13 years. With that, tonight's purpose. My colleague Alan Quinn and I will be providing an overview of the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan Development to all of you, and seek your feedback in general terms and in relation to some specific questions. And speaking of those questions, that's going to be the first on the agenda, is to review those questions that I'd like you to ruminate on while we're going through the presentation, and then we can discuss at the end. After we receive the feedback, or after I go over the feedback questions, I'll briefly provide an overview of stormwater issues that Issaquah and really, most cities have been and are facing right now in relation to stormwater. Now, I included this section into the PowerPoint and presentation tonight based on feedback from the environmental board presentation last month. So I really appreciated that feedback. So hopefully, this will help provide a little more context. And then finally, Alan and I will provide an overview of the work to date, the next steps, and then finish with asking you those questions. And to start us off, and then come back to this at the end, of course, we'll love to take any general questions you have along the way or at the end. But we have three particular questions here that were also in the staff report, I'd like you to think about. And there'll be more context provided when we get to these at the end. But the first is, what are your thoughts on our criteria to prioritize both issues and actions? The second is, how aggressive should we be in addressing climate change with this plan? And, you know, this is a separate, working closely with Megan, but we have a particular issue we're concerned with here in relation to precipitation. And then finally, should we consider developing policy directives to guide funding across our stormwater programs, which at a high level are conveyance and flood control, water quality, and... So before we jump into the master plan, and again, this was a suggestion from the environmental board as well, I'd like to provide context in relation to stormwater runoff, stormwater pollution, and potential solutions to both. So let me start by saying something incredibly obvious, but at the same time, it's the cornerstone to this conversation. As we, as a society, move from forested to rural and then to urban land use here in Issaquah, and of course, everywhere else in our region and country, there were unanticipated negative consequences related to stormwater. This graphic illustrates, on the top left, only a small portion of rainfall converts to stormwater runoff during forested conditions. About 90% of rainfall under these conditions either infiltrates into the ground or is utilized in some way, shape, or form by trees, shrubs, and plants. And then the remaining 10% is runoff. Now, these percentages, as you can see on the graph on the side, change drastically as land use moves from forested to urban conditions, where stormwater runoff increases from about 10% to 55% in any given parcel. So without any proactive measures, this increase in stormwater runoff results in increased peak flows and thereby flooding, increased bank erosion and channel scour, thereby increasing sediment load, and finally, increased pollutant loading because stormwater runoff collects and conveys chemicals and debris into our stormwater system and the local water bodies. Now, all these impacts I described are a result of a lack of natural storage and treatment for the rainfall as we move from forested to urban conditions. You know, again, maybe go without saying, but just to hit the point home here, rainfall under forested condition is stored in trees, soils, plants, and the rainfall is infiltrated and then treated by the soil and microorganisms. So a lot going, happening in forested conditions. Now, these physical changes that occur as stormwater runoff increases have direct impacts not only on humans, but also aquatic species. Even with my limited tenure here at the city, I'm keenly aware of serious impacts to residential homes and businesses due to flooding. I am also aware of beach closures in the greater Seattle area due to high pollutant concentrations. And then most of us are keenly aware of the declining fish populations, not only in our region, but in our own Issaquah watersheds due to many factors, including excessive flooding, water quality declines, lack of habitat, and lack of food sources. So let's focus on water quality a bit before we talk about short- and long-term solutions. Now, this graphic tells a very simple story. There are many possible sources of water pollution in our urban landscape. Some of the most common that are noted here include street and automobile runoff, including, you know, antifreeze, oil, and tire and brake pad lining residue, industrial runoff, agricultural runoff, including pesticides and fertilizers, pet waste, and leaky septic tanks. Now, there's good part in this bad news, and that is that the loading of many of these pollutants into our environment may be significantly revised by changing basic day-to-day practices at work and at home. And the same good news not only applies to the water quality, but to peak flows and runoff as well. So on that note, let's talk a little bit about solutions, both at the city level and then at the household level. Starting with federal, as a society, you know, we began to better understand stormwater-related impacts from moving to that forested urban landscape in the 60s. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDS, as most of you know it, began to address water pollution by regulating sources that discharge pollutants into waters of the US. Now, created in 1972 by the Clean Water Act, the NPDS permit program is authorized to state governments by EPA to perform many permitting, admin, and enforcement aspects of the program. Now, much time has elapsed, and many lessons have been learned since 1972. So the existing minimum control measures in the current NPDS permit, which we are regulated by, to reduce stormwater impacts at our city agency level, you know, include stormwater planning, which, you know, master planning is part of, of course, public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, storm system mapping and documentation, illicit discharge detection, controlling runoff from new development, redevelopment, and construction sites, operation and maintenance best practices, and then finally, source control for existing development. And then finally, here, as we look at the slide, there's also, you know, good news for us at home, outside of work. A lot of stuff we can do at individual and neighborhood level, such as covering piles of dirt, mulch, yard waste, and other debris, so there's less runoff, disposing of chemicals properly, checking vehicles for leaks, very simple, and covering trash containers and cleaning up pet waste. So there's a lot of things we can do and pass along to our customers and our citizens. So our desired outcomes for this Stormwater and Surface Water Master Plan that is moving along a very similar timeline to Megan's Climate Action Plan. These desired outcomes really are scope of work and deliver rules as well. So you can look at them in either way. But this is what we will be really buying for our time and our staff resources. We're going to develop a roadmap, which was the master plan, to help us reduce flooding, improve water quality, and habitat conditions. And this is a living, breathing document, which just won't sit on a shelf, but will be dynamic and updated as needed as we go along. We also want to develop clear and concise policy statements, starting today, which will help us build projects under this umbrella of policy direction. So we're in lockstep, that our actions, I should say, are in lockstep with the policies. We also want to develop SMART goals and performance targets that we can track and report on over time. A list of priority actions, again, very similar to Megan's output in the climate plan. These actions would not only include capital projects, but operating programs, maintenance activities, and all to, again, reduce flooding, improve water quality, and improve habitat. Of course, one thing we're buying here is compliance with the NPDS permit to implement the Stormwater Management Action Planning element of the permit. And then finally, compliance with our DOE Department of Ecology Grant requirements to develop a watershed-scale plan. And to be real clear, this grant is the mechanism that allowed us to go beyond the basic permit requirements from NPDS. So shout out to DOE for having the grant, and a shout out to Alan, who you'll hear in a little bit, for writing into a stellar application. And then the final thing here in this tier, at the very end, the last bullet, really ensure that we're aligned with city comprehensive and strategic plans, which you'll see on the next slide. As a segue from that bullet, we thought it would be helpful to provide a summary of the plans, codes, guidelines that may influence our work and/or may be influenced by our work. And I've broken this down into two categories, city plans and then region and federal. So a few highlights here of the city plans, again, including the comp plan and the strategic plan, which you just mentioned, and then also, of course, Megan's Climate and Sustainability Action Plan. And then on the federal level, two programs that we're really working closely with, given who we are here at Issaquah, is Washington Department of Transportation Call for Replacement Program, and then the FEMA Flood Insurance Program. But we do need to keep an eye on all of these as we do our work because of the feedback loop. And then finally, my last slide here before handing off to Mr. Quinn, our basic schedule, and just wanted to highlight a few things. As I briefly, you know, touched upon, the work that has been completed to date since 2019 has included identification of citywide flooding, water quality and habitat issues through a stakeholder engagement, and internal workshops. And we've also had some of the issues arise because of research on our existing physical characteristics, such as water quality and flow. uh, physical characteristics such as water quality and flow, uh, based on a, you know, fairly large database and document base that we have. And our consultant, uh, OTAC and, and Alan have been a driving force in, in that work to date. Now what lies ahead beyond tonight, uh, and which we're starting with tonight are policy directives that are consistent with the development of policy directives that are consistent with city strategic and comprehensive plan. Then long, we want to develop, uh, based on that, long-term goals and associate a performance targets. And then finally, that will lead into actions, priority actions. Again, not just capital programs and projects, but also operating programs such as street sweeping, operation and maintenance best practices and potentially policy development to address all these, these issues. Now consistent stakeholder engagement will occur through the rest of the project. And I really appreciated uh, some of the feedback you provided in the last presentation around, um, you know, what does feedback look like to you? Good feedback. So we'll be taking that into mind. Uh, but we already have planned, uh, again, uh, multiple council touches with, with council, of course. And then four boards and commissions, uh, the Parks Board, Planning, uh, Policy Planning Commission, Economic Vitality Commission, and then of course, the Environmental Board. Uh, and then in addition to that, I'll be working with Autumn and others, reaching out to uh, the wide array of stakeholders that, uh, including the youth, uh, nonprofits, low income, all that we mentioned before, a way to, to make sure we grab, uh, uh, feedback from, from, from that diverse group as well. And then finally on this, we'll see that, uh, we're, we're shooting for adoption, uh, preventing, presenting to you for adoption in, uh, March or late, or late first quarter, 2022. But with that, I am going to hand it, hand it off to Mr. Quinn.
Great. Thank you, Gary. Um, good evening. City council members, my name is Alan Quinn. I'm a senior stormwater engineer for the city of Issaquah. I've been with the city for about two and a half years, uh, before coming to Issaquah. I previously worked for the city of Rancho Cordova in California, where I was a stormwater manager. Um, and then before that I was, worked for the city of Renton for 17 years as a, um, engineer, stormwater engineer. So just a, just a brief background on me and without further ado, um, so the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan involved, um, a fair amount, it was a significant amount of stakeholder engagement. That was a high priority for us was to make sure that we, we were able to get input from all types of groups of, you know, people, organizations, departments. And we really broke it up into three, uh, what I call engagements, types of engagement at critical stages. Uh, the first was with, um, one is with the council and the various board, uh, boards and commissions. The other type of engagement is what I call internal, external stakeholder um, engagement. And then lastly, community outreach. And each of those, you know, we were going to have key touchpoints, you know, and this is the first one really, actually the second one with this, with the council, and I'll get into that a little bit later. We had an initial outreach to council via, um, uh, staff report. And so we didn't do a formal, um, council meeting that last year because of COVID. Um, the initial outreach for the stakeholders occurred in late 2019. And that was basically the first kickoff meeting that we had with, uh, internal and external stakeholders, including city operations, parks and community planning, development departments. External stakeholders included, uh, Washington State Department of Transportation, Department of Ecology, the Snoqualmie Tribe, uh, Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife and as well as the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trust and Trout Unlimited. So we did include some nonprofits in there as well. So it was a really robust kickoff meeting and uh, a lot of feedback. Uh, it was a chance to give an overview of, of the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan and to seek, um, uh, you know, participants, stakeholders, what they wanted to see in this plan and to get initial feedback as far as problems and issues with flooding and water quality. Um, for this community outreach, it was decided to do an online survey utilizing a mapping tool. Um, and that was, uh, decided based, our communications department team decided that was a great way to approach the, the community. Um, so we had an online, uh, questionnaire, survey. Uh, and we asked two questions. Uh, one was where has, where has the community seen flooding? And, uh, have you, and have they noticed any long-term changes in water flow into creeks and water quality in the creeks? We received 74 respondents. Um, and which is considered, uh, as I understand, actually fairly successful, a number of people and who provided input. Um, the, the mapping tool that accompanied the survey was a great tool to allow respondents to locate areas of flooding and, or habitat or other concerns they had. So we were able to have a, have a map with locations and then a, a detailed, uh, narrative of each, of all the issues that people brought up. Um, and then, and as I said earlier, in February 2020, uh, a council, a briefing memo was provided and to give just a summary of where, what the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan, uh, what, why we're doing it and the purpose behind it. Um, all this information was compiled and used to develop the first deliverable, uh, that we, our first product that we prepared. And this is, as Gary mentioned earlier, this is all, this is part of a grant that we received from ecology to do a storm, a storm, a watershed skill, um, assessment, a basin assessment. And the deliverable, the ecology was what, what we're calling the watershed characterization report. And we did it for the six basins within Issaquah. Um, this, these reports included a data collection literature review, the, uh, compile, we compiled all the known issues from all the stakeholders. Um, uh, we included, includes an updated hydraulic model of Issaquah Creek. And a fairly extensive analysis of water quality monitoring data that was provided by the city does. Uh, we have, we have a, a monitoring program. We sample nine stations throughout the city. Uh, both, both, both base flow and storm flow, water quality monitoring. And that information was then used to, uh, we analyzed it and to do some, do type, uh, trend analysis and that all is all a part of this watershed characterization report. Uh, we also looked at the influences of the built environment on receiving water. So how are the, within the different basins, how does urban runoff, you know, development and, um, land use affect water quality and flow, water flow? All right. Next, next slide. Uh, this table summarizes the results of the survey, uh, not just a survey, but all the input from all the stakeholders, including the various meetings we had. Uh, where people provided their input. And as you can see, Issaquah Creek is by far the most significant basin we have in terms of flow issue, water quality and habitat. Um, so these, all these, uh, metrics are identified in each of the characterization reports. So there's, there's a a description of each of the issue, issues, and then a corresponding in the map showing where these issues are located. So it's very helpful and it actually, we've used it, uh, in terms of developing, somewhat developing our, uh, CIP, even though we haven't formalized this, this, the, the master plan. Uh, it has come in handy where we've had, um, community members have concerns and we were able to identify that, that those concerns have been, been brought up by previous, um, you know, uh, community members. So it's been a useful tool. Um, I guess, yeah. So that's interesting. Next, next slide, please, Gary. And so just to reiterate, reiterate what Gary said earlier, um, I want you to consider these three things. What are your thoughts on the criteria we're going to use to prioritize issues and solutions? How aggressive should we be addressing climate change with this plan? And should we develop a policy directive to guide funding across all programs? And just for your consideration, we have this, a, a list of what we've come up with and for our prioritization metrics. Um, so basically how are we going to prioritize the projects and, and that we've, you know, that we identified to address the known issues? Effectiveness, uh, land ownership as a public or private, constructability, permitting, um, which is important for, especially for restoration projects, cost and funding opportunities, uh, and of course, timing, uh, working with others when they're doing projects, try to coordinate, um, and, um, regulatory requirements, environmental, social justice. So making sure that we are equitably across the city doing projects, prioritizing projects, um, with, you know, disadvantaged communities if we're appropriate. And lastly, what are the benefits that we do, uh, in terms of, um, you know, Licks Mammoth, um, which is really the, the down, the downstream water body where all of our receiving water is drained to. So, and that's where we have, you know, the, the fish, the salmon and, um, recreation and so forth. So, and, uh, I believe that is it. So I guess I will turn it over to Gary.
We could take, um, some questions, comments on number one here, or I could run through two and three and then open it up for everybody. Whatever would work best for everyone.
Let's, um, take a question because I do see that, um, council member Dee Michelle has a question. So council member Dee Michelle.
Thank you. This is council member Dee Michelle. Uh, could you just go a little bit into depth about how the metrics would be used? What would be the process? Um, do some of these get more points than others or, um, you know, when you're looking at a project and you're going through these criteria, how would you, what would be the process and how would you end up rating a project using that criteria?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. So I guess we haven't initially done this yet. We're still, you know, fin- finalizing these reports that ecology is, is reviewing and providing comments. Um, but essentially the next phase is to, is to, and we've done some of this already, but coming up with a list of projects, a suite of projects that can address really three main areas. So it's water quality treatment, water quality, flow can, or flow, water flow where we have flooding and then habitat. Um, so really it's identifying a project, uh, that we think can, can address that, that problem, you know, and then looking at each one of these and, and providing some type of a qualitative, um, or actually would be, you know, a quantitative, uh, assigning a value to it. Um, and then we got to decide what sort of, how to weight that value. So do we wait, um, you know, constructability more than, uh, regulatory requirements? And so it's really going to depend on the type of project and what, you know, what we're addressing. But that's sort of how I see it happening. And then, and then you just come up with a score, quantitative score, and then rank that score. Um, I know Gary, you may have some other ideas.
I think that, that's a great question. I think that's similar to what I was thinking and we can, um, you definitely, when, when we're going to be coming back next, it'll be about, uh, more about policy. But at that time, we, we'll, we'll have this more uh, honed in and we can get your feedback on there. Uh, I've done it very similar a couple of times what Alan described where we just have a numerical ranking for each of these. And then you look at the final score. However, I, I think there's some, uh, interest or always some, uh, interesting things you can do when you do some weighting and you see how things change, uh, or not, right? Uh, so that's something I guess I'd like to potentially try is both just a flat rating scheme and then also just a weighted, uh, weighted one and a few topics. But we'd love to get your additional input on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I did have a question also. Um, can you explain the land ownership one in particular and how that would be a criteria?
Sure. Um, so I think really it's, is it, you know, first off, is it on public land or is it on, um, you know, city right of ways, private property? So if it's private property, that makes it a little more challenging obviously to, to do a project on private property. It's not impossible, but it does involve more work and cost. So obviously we want to try to, you know, look at projects that would first be on private property within the right of way, I mean, within public property, uh, city property, owned property or right of way. Um, and then, uh, and then if, but if obviously the good project is on private property, then that's, you know, then if that's a great, it has a, a strong benefit to addressing, you know, water quality, then we would want to, you know, pursue that avenue. But that's basically how I, I see that. Um, and once again, Gary, do you have anything to add to that or?
No, I think that's really good, Alan.
Okay. Thank you. I am not seeing any more questions. So I think at this point we will, um, before we go into the guided discussion on, giving comments on the, the guided questions, um, I will call for public comment. Uh, city clerk, I'm wondering if anybody has indicated a desire to speak on this topic?
Uh, let me just ask if anyone who's attending from the public is interested in, in making comments at this time. If so, please raise your virtual hand. You can find the virtual hand icon typically in the participant panel, even though the location can vary by device. And I'm monitoring our attendee list now. And I don't see that anyone's indicating a desire to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Now we will have uh, comments from council as well as if there are additional questions. And I do see that there is an additional question from council member Walsh.
Thank you. This is council member Walsh. Aren't there a few more slides?
Yes, there's two, uh, two more questions. I'm sorry. I didn't make that clear.
Okay.
And so we'll go on to the second one, but what I, just to rephrase what I heard here today, we'll move forward with these, uh, metrics. Sounds like when we come back next, we'll also, or in the report, it will be really clear. Uh, have a description for each one of these. So everybody knows what they are, especially like that land ownership. Uh, I think that, that really deserves one. And then we'll, uh, you know, the next time we see you, uh, on this, we will have kind of the, the process, right, of how we're going to go about it, scoring, weighting as well, but we'll stick with these, uh, particular metrics for now. Okay. Uh, second question here, uh, climate change. Uh, let me give you just a little brief little intro on here. So our latest projections, as, as I'm aware, uh, that haven't changed too much over the last few years, but I did recheck again over the past week. Uh, you know, the big, biggest change here, uh, that, that some say has started to occur already is a greater likelihood of short intense rain events. Uh, so think more Midwest, East Coast. We've had a number of those in the past 20 years that have, have had huge impacts to the region. Uh, but that, that is something that statistically looking like it's going to become more common. And then also the Pacific Northwest winters are projected to be warmer and wetter and summers warm and drier. Now, the, the, the most concern for, for us here, I know, uh, you know, Megan, again, calling on her again, again, have a lot more probably to discuss in her plan. We're really focused on the precipitation, potential changes with, uh, climate change. Those very tangible impacts could be if these predictions, uh, are right on the mark, our higher peak flows, uh, the greater erosive forces in our streams and decreased water, water quality due to that greater sedimentation, just to name, name a few. Now there are also of course, uh, potential changes to temperature patterns and that might affect riparian and wetland floor and fauna as well. Uh, but this master plan, you know, we're, our proposed approach here to, to any climate change, uh, issue would be to use best available science, of course. Uh, but to be clear, there, there currently is, there is no mandate for what we need to do uh, in terms of climate change for this master plan. It is, it is a clean slate. But we have, um, four, um, high-level, uh, options again, uh, just to get your, your thoughts and feelings on here. Uh, the first is, you know, no action unless it becomes required. And the reason would be, you know, um, we would wait until the predictions are more certain and/or to other communities have adopted strategies and policies to define those actions. So, so that, that's basically the status quo. Number, uh, next option would be a minimal proactive approach. Um, and that would, could look, could look like, uh, new design standards for new projects only. That would take into account this potential change to this higher, uh, intensity, short duration events. So you'd likely be seeing larger capital projects, uh, if we would, would take this action, right? Uh, to mitigate for those higher, higher flows in the future. Now a moderate proactive approach would be, you know, adding on to minimal, but we could also take those design standards when we retrofit a project. So not a new, completely new project, but retrofitting it. Um, another idea here is we could estimate and illustrate what a potential future 100-year floodplain looks like for Issaquah Creek. Uh, and we could just have that for conversation purposes to see this is, this is what might happen. Uh, and another approach here under moderate would be, uh, using more aggressive real-time control of stormwater facilities, again, a higher cost, but, uh, potentially greater, greater payback. And then finally, you know, what a really aggressive up, uh, climate change. And then finally, you know, what a really aggressive climate change option here would be, would be working with UW or another researcher to develop very specific, Issaquah specific data for hydrology. And we could also apply that hydrology to our, our models and create a floodplain and regulate to a future floodplain. Now, FEMA, that would be way above what FEMA would do, but that is just, that is an option. So those, those give you, you know, that, that gamut of options to take. So just wanted to stop here for a second and see if any, any thoughts or, or ideas on these four.
Council Deputy President Ray has a question.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Hi, this is Chris Ray. Have you done any preliminary work at what the impact on our rates would be for the various solutions that you're talking about? So if those are the four options, or those are range options, what that would look like in terms of impact on rates?
That's a great point. No, no, we haven't done that yet. But that would be, that would be part of this master planning process, would be to look at that. And, and then there's a couple of ways even within that to look at. One would be, you know, almost a zero-sum game where you would keep the same rates, but actually just your projects would cost more, so you would do less, right? And then the other would be that, that rate path increase. But we, we could certainly do that with whatever level we choose here. And we'll commit to doing that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thanks, Councilmember Walsh. Before I can provide feedback on kind of the different options and levels, I guess I would need a sense of scope or cost estimate ranges, both for the planning and the ultimate. Because, you know, I don't know whether we're talking about $1,000 to create a plan for what the 100-year floodplain is, or $1 million. And so some, some sense of ranges would be helpful because I think we can obviously say in the community, we're very concerned about climate change and our environment and would be more on the proactive side. But what's that cost? So that would be useful. Thanks.
Thank you. And I can merge that with the last two comments of put those together. And it can, the estimates, which just hit me, it can be very project specific. Like, okay, here's what a, a new development, how much the increased cost might be for new development, for new standards. We can look at that. And then we could also get into, okay, here's what the planning, the macro planning to do that would be. So I think that we can give you a feel, feel for both ends of the spectrum on that, if that works.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, do you have any further questions? No, okay. Councilmember Marts?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. So broadly speaking, I would say the old adage about amounts of prevention being worth a pound of cure. If we have a dollar to spend today, if, if we have a dollar to spend today addressing climate change, I would rather use it to try to reduce climate impact through carbon sequestration and energy efficiency retrofits on things related to the city. I think all these things may, these things you have here may be necessary at some point. But I, I think we are, continue to be the phase where we need to do everything we can to try to help our state and our nation hit the carbon reduction goals that we have. So that in the end, we can say that we've done everything that we can to try to reduce the chance of, of really, really bad things happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I should add that that's something that's, that can go under either the minimal or no action is writing down what we might do in the future too, just to have this in this document and explaining that, hey, we're, we're focused on other things at this point in relation to climate change, but we have this in our back pocket and can go to this if it becomes needed as well. So that could be a happy medium as well. All right, why don't I move on to the last question here? Thank you for your patience. Funding balance proposal. So final feedback question here is funding across the three major programs in, in stormwater. Conveyance and flooding, water quality, and habitat. We currently do not have a policy directive, but other utilities that I have worked with did at a, at a high level. And there were some benefits in that in terms of expectations and outcomes, on what particular program for a six-year period we really wanted to focus on, or if they were all even, just, again, it wasn't a necessarily hard and fast rule, but it was a way, when we developed our CIP, to, to plan for the various programs. So as an example, this is something that I've used before in my tenure at this Seattle Public Utilities, was a 50% target for conveyance and flood reduction, 25 for water quality, and 25 for habitat. And what this does not include is grants. So this would be, I should have put this on a note here. This would be all the, the ratepayer funding that we receive. And then grants would be, you know, kind of in addition to this. And where you get most of your grants really are the habitat and water quality. There are definitely flood, flood reduction grants as well, as well. But we tend to do a very good job here in Issaquah in getting habitat and water quality grants. So just your, your thought on, again, this, this might not be something your council's interested in, but we just wanted to tee this up to get your feeling on this potential policy directive.
Thank you. I am not seeing any council members on this item, but maybe perhaps we can revisit this in the context of the broader direction needed at the end in our comments.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, our last slide here, where we're headed. So third quarter of this year will be policy development. And then we'll be, be coming to you with new and existing policies to get your feedback on and how to move forward with those. And then we'll go to goals, performance targets, and actions in the fourth quarter. And again, those are going to be built on the policies. So if you, another way to look at it is backwards, is when we provide a, a project, we, we want that to be able to, to, for all of you to go back and say, oh, I know where this project, why this is showing up on the CIP, right? This goes back to a, a policy directive that they have. And it also goes back to a goal or a performance target. And then finally, in first quarter of next year, we will be having the final draft and then adoption for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a comment, Councilmember D. Michelle. And I believe it was on the slide with the, one slide back from this. Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. This is Councilmember D. Michelle again. I know that we're working at a 30,000-foot level and that we're early on in the plan. But, you know, I don't think I can give relevant comments on this without understanding a lot more about the long-range impacts of spending those amounts in those areas. So I think as we're going through this process, if you could explain a little bit more why conveyance and flood reduction's getting 50%, as opposed to why habitat's getting 25%? What's the rationale for that from your, you know, perspective? As someone who's certainly more of an expert than I am, but it would be really helpful to have that understanding in order to give you any, any really good feedback on it. So that's, and I think as you go out and you're engaging the public in this, they're going to need that explanation as well.
Absolutely. That's, that's a great point. And what we can use as a baseline for that is the issues that Alan and company have already obtained from constituents to see, you know, how, how that rolls out. You know, we can look at that and, and use that as just an example. But I appreciate that, and we will continue to do that. And, and at the end, we can come back and we, we talked a little bit about different scenarios. This is something if, if you'd like, kind of like this idea, but aren't sure about the numbers, this, this, we could give you examples of, hey, this is what it would look like. You know, 33, 33, 33, this is my, what it looked like with different splits. So we will, we will kind of keep that in the back of my, back of our minds and then tease that out as we go along.
Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful. Right now, you know, as a layman, I don't have the context to really provide you with feedback on this. Right? So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I, I would, this is Council President Hunt. I would just also think that it could help for that context to have what the current spending is, what that mix of spending looks like. Is that similar to this 50%, 25%, 25%? Because that could also give some context for folks.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. It's been a pleasure.
Okay, so at this point, so you've concluded your presentation. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, since I, I called for public comment too early, earlier on, I'm going to check in if there is anybody in the, on the call that would like to make a public comment because I do know we have some members of the public on the line. So City Clerk, if you could call for public comments again. Thank you.
Yes. So once again, if you're attending the meeting and would like to comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on a computer, you will likely find the icon under the participant panel in the lower right-hand corner, and the location can vary by device. So monitor the list for a minute here to see if anyone would like to comment this evening on the plan. And I don't see that anyone's indicating a desire to speak.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, and if we could have this slide up for the direction needed, I think that would be helpful if, if you could put that last slide on the screen again.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I will look to the chat if any council members want to give guidance on these three questions. Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I'm just, I have some, I think the evaluation criteria are fine. I think we'll have to true those up as we move forward. Number two is the one that I want you to do some work on is, I personally can't give you any guidance on how aggressive I want you to be on climate change with this plan until I know what the cost is of the different options. So I, I need, I need to come back with some sort of at least order of magnitude planning numbers on this is what it will cost and this is what the impact on rates will be before I can really feel comfortable moving or picking a direction there. And then I, I, I don't have any strong opinions on number three.
Thank you.
Okay. I am not seeing any other council members. I will make some comments and I'll keep an eye on the chat if anybody else would like to give direction on this one. So firstly, on the thoughts on criteria to prioritize issues, I think a lot of the criteria that were there are having to do with the constructability and then whether the property is owned or not. And, and so those are sort of feasibility-type criteria, which I, which I understand why they're there. I think it might also be good to align with the project selection criteria that are in the CIP. That's a new table that's in the CIP this year. But it has some, some binary criteria around if the project addresses life and safety concerns, if it's a community priority, if it conforms to the strategic plan goals, environmental impact, identified funding source, and then replacement or repair of existing infrastructure. And so I think maybe aligning those criteria with the criteria that are in the CIP would also help when these different projects that are in the CIP, we can have a sort of similar way of thinking through them in, in our different plans. So that might be one consideration for the criteria. Then on how aggressive we should be, I firstly noted that we haven't updated our storm and surface water plan since, I believe, 2002. So I think we have a lot of updating. I'm hoping we can update more frequently than that in the future. But I think we have a lot of updating for best available science that we, we need to do. So I'm not sure where in the, in the list of possibilities that would fit. But definitely, we need to address climate change with the plan and address many of the other new developments that have occurred between now and 2002, for sure. So I think that, I think we should be more aggressive. I'm, I'm glad that this is also aligning with the Climate Action Plan. And I think, you know, if you're able to work with the community convenings to get feedback on this, this as an element of what we're doing for climate, I think that could also inform how aggressive we should be in that context. But definitely, climate is a big concern for the community, and I think it should be a big focus in this plan. And then lastly, on should we develop a policy directive? I, I think we do need more information about this, the split of funding that is currently in the plan. I think from my perspective, the, the important things that I've heard from the community are really around both the life and safety issues, the flooding, flooding of property. Those are major concerns. And I think that it is appropriate to have a policy directive that focuses on reducing that and then also habitat and salmon and our natural areas and natural habitat, I think, is another focus. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other council members indicating a desire to, to comment on this. I will make one, one further comment, which is fairly specific. But one thing in the strategic plan that, that is in the environmental stewardship part of the strategic plan is around wanting the community to be able to enjoy the natural areas. And so I think also just taking into account that stormwater ponds can be beautiful and can be community amenities as well as serving their primary function. I think that that could align with the, some of the goals in the strategic plan. So just looking to that strategic plan as guidance as we're developing the stormwater plan will be very useful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other council comments. So do you have what you need from direction in terms of direction on these?
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. And there's a request for a five-minute break before we move into the CIP. So I will, I see some nodding. So I will call at this time for a five-minute break before we begin the next item, which will be the CIP. Hello, everyone. I think we are all back from the break. So at this time, I will call us back from the break and begin the next item, which is ID 0830, the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan, including Transportation Improvement Program. This will be presented by Susie Moncel, the Senior Budget Analyst.
And Council President, members of the council, before Susie gets started, I'd like to make a few introductory remarks, if I may. Is that all right, Council President?
Yes.
Mayor Polly asked me to cover some specific issues with the council before we get started tonight. In addition, Councilmember Goodman shared with staff several questions, which I'd also like to address as we start off. As we've talked about, the CIP, really, one project has bubbled to the top of the list, and that is TRO 28, the Northwest Seminole Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project. This is an important project, and as I'll talk about it in a minute, certainly there is some history to this. But as we're now on the third of four evenings. But as we're now on the third of four evenings talking about the CIP, I just wanted to share that the administration's position at this point is that we're holding on our recommendation for full project funding in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, and remain committed to developing a finance plan to ensure that the full project funding is funded going forward. We're not proposing out-year funding for this project. We believe we need to actually start design on the project to better understand actual project construction costs first. And until we do that, we don't believe that we will, that we have a good number in those out-years for construction, and we don't, we don't endorse further unfunding of important projects in those out-years, twenty-four and beyond, to fully fund TR O twenty-eight today without these firm costs. As I began work on this year's CIP, and you know, this was my first as your city administrator, I talked to nearly all of you one-on-one to get a better sense of your priorities for the CIP. This project, TR O twenty-eight, the Northwest Sammamish Road project, was really at the top of most, of all of your list's priorities. So it's made sense that we've had this kind of specific attention given to this project. But there's also some history to the project, and I wanted to just take a moment to walk through that history, that kind of speaks to where we stand with the project tonight. The project that first appeared in the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two CIP is a future-year project costing eleven point three million dollars. It was listed as an unfunded transportation project in the two thousand and nineteen budget at a cost of five point six million dollars. In early two thousand and nineteen, the city council had an ad hoc finance committee that met and identified several projects that were included on an unfunded transportation project list. The Southeast Forty-third Signal, work on Newport Way, the Central Park Signal, the Front Street Streetscape, Northwest Gilman Concept Design, the intersection of twelfth and SR nine hundred, and the Northwest Sammamish Road project. That project, at that point, had an unfunded cost of three point three million dollars in two thousand and twenty, and two point three million dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, for a total unfunded cost of five point six million dollars. The ad hoc finance committee members at that point recommended expanding the scope of the Northwest Sammamish Road project from the five point six million, which was known as the pinch point project, on the unfunded transportation project list, changing that by nine point four million dollars to include non-motorized improvements for a total project cost of fifteen million dollars. The ad hoc finance committee recommended that the fifteen million dollar Northwestern Amish Road project be funded as follows. In two thousand and twenty, three million dollars of general fund councilmatic debt, this was the portion of the cost related to the washed-out work, and would only be needed if the cost of washed-out work exceeded contingencies. And then in the out-years twenty-one through twenty-three, twelve million dollars that would be funded through a transportation benefit district sales tax. The recommendations of the ad hoc finance committee were included in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-five proposed CIP that was transmitted to the city council in the spring of two thousand and nineteen. The council adopted TR O twenty-eight as proposed in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-five CIP with the intention to pursue a transportation benefit district sales tax. In an effort to continue discussions about a potential transportation funding package, the administration allocated seventy-five thousand in the two thousand and twenty proposed operating budget, twenty thousand of which for community engagement, and fifty-five thousand for election costs. In addition, the two thousand and twenty adopted budget included three million dollars in funding, supported by councilmatic debt for TR O twenty-eight. On February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, the council adopted an agenda bill authorizing the issuance of general fund-backed debt for two thousand and twenty capital needs. The A B noted at that time the city would not issue the three million dollars for TR O twenty-eight as previously planned in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-five CIP and the two thousand and twenty adopted budget, because the washed-out work that may have been required, that may have required this funding was delayed until two thousand and twenty-one. Meanwhile, of course, COVID pandemic happened, and the administration announced that the city would pause further work in two thousand and twenty on the TBD sales tax out of concern that more time would be required to develop a viable package. This was later memorialized by the administration to the council in the COVID underspend process, when the administration announced in April, two thousand and twenty, it would not spend the seventy-five thousand dollars allocated in two thousand and twenty for the TBD sales tax-related outreach and election costs. So we went through much of last year, paused on many projects, but as we looked at the two thousand and twenty-one budget, the administration came forward with the one-year CIP in two thousand and twenty-one and included three hundred thousand dollars in TR O twenty-eight from the School Safety Fund to support design costs for the project. The two thousand and twenty-one adopted budget did not include councilmatic debt funding for the three million dollars in washed-out funding, because it appeared by the time the two thousand and twenty-one budget was developed that the funding would not be needed. So as we are in two thousand and twenty-one, the three hundred thousand dollars that has been budgeted is in the hands of our Public Works staff. This funding will allow Public Works to complete topographic survey and mapping work of the existing ground, delineating wetlands along the project, and to work with the community and council to adopt a preferred alternative for a project. So that work is now just beginning here as we're heading into, well, into month five of the fiscal year. Work on these projects cannot begin until Washdaw completes its work on the auxiliary lane project on I ninety at the pinch point. Washdaw was supposed to complete the work in February, two thousand and twenty-one, but the completion was delayed. Space is limited in this section, and the city needs to know how much room will be available to build improvements. A question asked by councilmember Goodman and others was, why two years of design for construction? Why can't we move quicker and faster with this project? And so as we have talked with our Public Works engineers, you know, they tell us that during two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, Public Works will engage the community and work on permitting and utility impact. Because this is such a large project with major utilities in the vicinity, will require a lot of coordination if relocation is required. There is a steep slope and critical area adjacent to the segment of the proposed improvements, which may require retaining wall and sections if we want to widen the roadway's footprint. And this will require both geotechnical exploration, wetland delineation, as well as additional environmental permitting. All of these items are anticipated to take two years to complete. And so, Council President, members of the council, when talking really about this first main point, and we're certainly happy to answer questions as we move forward, this is a very important project. You have all said it's a very important project. There's been work done on it in the past. We believe we have the money in place to do all that we can do in the next two years. And as I'll talk further in a moment, we still need to identify longer-term financing for this and other important capital projects. A second group of projects that have had some discussion by the council, which Mayor Polly asked that I touch on this evening, was TR O twenty-two, the Newport State Route nine hundred and Southeast Fifty-fourth Street improvements, as well as TR O twenty-three, the Newport Way Maple to Sunset improvements. Again, the administration is proposing no funding changes for this project. This is also a very complicated project. There is federal money already involved and already spent on portions of this project, and the city needs to complete the right-of-way phase of these projects, including the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars proposed budgeted in two thousand and twenty-two by two thousand and twenty-eight, in order not to return money already received from the federal government and spent on earlier phases of the project. If the city does not complete the right-of-way phase of both projects, TR O twenty-two and TR O twenty-three, by two thousand and twenty-eight, the city would have to return as much as four point five million dollars in grant money. So again, another complicated project, one that the Mayor Polly, the administration is committed to moving forward, and proposing no changes with that. Councilmember Goodman, as I mentioned, had several questions. One of them talked about outreach to the community. Again, this year, Mayor Polly felt it was important to get broader community input in the CIP, so we held a community meeting once the proposed CIP was first presented to the city council, and asked various boards and commissions for input as well. That input has been received. It is in your packet this evening, and we'd be happy to address any of the issues raised or answer any questions about that. The Parks Board and the Transportation Advisory Board has had input in the staff's proposals for parks and transportation projects before the CIP was finalized this year, and that has been a past practice. Again, with reflection on how best to do a CIP, every community does it a little differently. Mayor Polly's feeling is very, very positive about involving the community more, and I think her feeling and her desire moving forward would be to get the community involved even sooner, and our boards and commissions involved even sooner, prior to the proposed CIP being released, and will work on a new structure for that before the two thousand and twenty-three CIP process. Another question raised by Councilmember Goodman and others was why the spending of two point three million dollars of the five million dollars in the Lakeside Development Agreement is now being proposed as of the last meeting to be deferred. The administration heard from several members of the city council about their desire to spend these funds on specific capital projects rather than a collection of miscellaneous projects. So Mayor Polly agreed, and the funds were removed until such time that the city council gives specific direction on the use of these monies. A final area that Mayor Polly asked that I cover this evening before we get to your questions and deliberations is the need for long-term financing plans for our capital projects. I think it's been very clear over the last two evenings of our discussions, we have lots of needs, and while we're fortunate to have impact fees, fortunate to have real estate, transfer tax money, other funding sources, there are still funding needs for many projects that we did not fulfill. So Mayor Polly plans next month to form a capital financing community task force. This task force will consist of council members and members of the public to consider options for capital financing of projects and report back to the city council in January, two thousand and twenty-two. The charge of the task force will be, will include review of options to fund projects included in the six-year CIP, and certainly over the last few evenings, we've talked about some of those options, the transportation benefit district sales tax, perhaps a parks bond, perhaps parks levy, perhaps councilmatic debt financing. These will all be items that the mayor will ask this task force to look at, come back to the council in January, two thousand and twenty-two, and then if there's need for voter approval for anything, we would have that ability, looking at a November, two thousand and twenty-two election cycle, that should give us enough time to do that. The other piece of this is the mayor feels very strongly about having the task force hold additional public meetings to get a better sense from the community on project and funding priorities. Again, when you're talking about the wide array of infrastructure projects that we have in our capital improvement program, you know, streets and parks and sewer and water infrastructure, there's lots of issues and lots of needs. And I think as we move forward, it's important really to get a sense from the community in a more granular sense, what specific projects are most important to them, what ways to pay for them make the most sense, try to bring all that together. And so as we move forward with this iteration of the six-year CIP and future iterations of the, of the capital improvement program, that we'll be in a good place to do that. So Council President, members of the council, thank you for letting me take a few minutes to set out some of those issues. Susie is here and has, you know, we're really just here to answer questions. There's items that are attached in the packet. I also sent out late this afternoon an item that was in the packet last week, which is sort of the errata sheet of changes. We have just the one proposed CIP document after this evening. It will be the administration's plan to incorporate any changes into a final document, which will be before the council at your meeting next week for final action.
Thank you. Councilmember March.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I have a question about TR O twenty-three, which is Newport, Maple to Sunset. So in the current proposal, it's thirteen point four million funded over a thirteen point four million dollar total project cost. But in the two thousand and twenty CIP, the total project cost for TR O twenty-three was thirty-one point four million dollars. So TR O twenty-two has future-year expenditures beyond two thousand and twenty-seven. TR twenty-three does not, and because TR twenty-three used to be thirty-one point four million and now is thirteen point four million, I have a concern that there's actually a future-year cost there that's not reflected.
Great.
It's on the order of eighteen million dollars.
Let me phone some friends. We can start with Susie Moncel from our Finance Department. I know we've got Public Works staff on the line as well. Susie, do you want to take a first crack or pass it off to Public Works?
Um, I, thank you, Administrator Bob Quitt. I would like to pass it off to Public Works. If John Mortensen is able to take that one.
Is John in the room, or is John slow?
Yep, I'm right here.
Oh, great, John.
Yep. Councilmember March, that's a great catch there, and I will confess that I forgot to put the future-year cost in there, that the cost that's in there takes the project from Maple through the Juniper roundabout, and so we need to get that revised to show the future-year cost to build the rest of the project from Juniper to Sunset. And thanks a lot for catching that.
Certainly. And am I, am I right to say that if it was, if it was thirty-one point four million in the two thousand and twenty CIP, and it's thirteen point four now, that's about an eighteen million dollar difference plus whatever inflation and other stuff? So on the order of eighteen million?
It's along that order. I'll double-check it before we get the final document published.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. I did have a question. Creek Corridor, PK zero forty-five, that project, we had a discussion in one of our earlier meetings about how that project and some of the other acquisition projects have money in each year in case there is grant opportunities that come up. But there is, I believe, unless it's been changed, in the CIP that's currently on the website, there is not funding in two thousand and twenty-three for that project, and so I wondered if, if that could be explained. Thanks.
Um, thank you for that question, Council President Hunt. I may tee it up for Director Watling if he wants to take it further, but there is, it's important to note the distinction between Creek Corridor, that project, and the Valley Trail and Creekside Acquisition Project. So I might just start there and let Director Watling add some more detail.
Good question, Council President Hunt. Thank you, Susie. You're absolutely right. The Creek Corridor project represents a development, projects to begin to achieve the longstanding community goal of connectivity of the Creek Corridor and creating a trail system from our southern border at Squawk Valley Park all the way to Lake Sammamish. The Valley Creekside Acquisition represents the acquisition needs for not only that recreational use, but also other multi-benefit uses we might have for purchasing property on, along the creek and along the valley floor. So Creekside Valley Acquisition is acquisition, Creek Corridor represents development investments.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. Uh, oh, yeah, now I do. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I'm gonna, I want to go back to where Councilmember March was on the Newport Way Maple to Sun, Newport Maple to Sunset improvements. And in the explanation, City Administrator, you gave at the beginning of this meeting, we were talking about the need to get to a certain point on both of the Newport projects because, related to right-of-way acquisition, I thought, before, so as not to have, fall into a trap of having to pay, being liable to pay back some federal grants. But when I look at twenty, TR zero two three, that looks like more than right-of-way acquisition. Did I misunderstand the, what we have to do to not be liable for paying the grants, or, or what am I missing?
Again, let's, let's ask John Mortensen from our Public Works Engineering staff if I may on that.
I think Director Goldber. No? For the TR twenty-three, Newport Way Maple to Sunset, we have approximately three million dollars in federal funds that are going towards the design phase of the project. And then we have almost a million dollars that's to go to right-of-way on the project. And so by having the million dollars in of right-of-way funding, that then sets us up to need to advance the project to construction within the next ten years. So it's, for a federally-funded project, each federally-funded phase needs to have a subsequent phase. So if you have design funding, you need So if you have design funding, you need to advance to either right-of-way or construction. And when you have federal right-of-way funds, you need to advance the project to construction. Did that answer your question?
I think it answered my question. I don't know that I liked the answer, that's all. But thanks, John.
Okay. And Director Goldberg, did that, did you have anything to add on that?
She types though. I'm not sure if she's having audio problems, but she typed it out.
No problem. I just saw in the chat that there was some back and forth. Okay. Does any other council members have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any at this time. So at this time, I will call for public comment before we go into council discussion and deliberations. Clerk Gieser, I will ask if you could please call for a public comment.
Yes, it looks like we do still have a few members of the public on the call. If anyone would like to make comments on the proposed CIP, if you could please raise your virtual hand. We'll just wait a minute here to monitor the list. You can also send me a chat if you'd like to make comments. And it doesn't appear that anyone's wishing to speak on this topic this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I do believe we have two options to address TR-028 in 2021. The first is just to add the expenditures. Unfunded expenditures are not a problem in this plan. Why do I say that? There's $63.4 million in unfunded expenditures in this plan. There's $23 million in facilities for a fire station that says we have all sorts of ways to fund it, but we don't know exactly how we're going to do it yet. There's 20 million in unfunded in parks, including 6.3 for PKO42 Tibbetts Valley Park, 4.1 for PKO43 Pickering Barn Park. These are places where expenditures are identified, but revenues are not identified. Under trails, there's 3.9 million, including TL005 East Sunset Trailhead for 3.1 million. Transportation, there's 16.5 million, including 6 million for TR-022, 6 million for TR-030 pavement management, and so on and so forth. So I believe that if we're willing to submit a CIP with 63.4 million in unfunded expenditures, another 11 million to cover what has been identified as the council's highest priority does not seem unreasonable. However, if we insist on finding balanced funding despite not needing it for these other projects that are seemingly less important to us, I think we do have a number of options. I think they've already mentioned the Lakeside DA. Somebody in the public recently asked us, how do we get new development to pay for old? I submit to you the Lakeside DA. Councilmatic bonding, although of course we have to pay it back, is an option. When I started on this council, we had very little councilmatic bond authority. We built up a lot of it in the intervening years. We haven't used it. This seems like the kind of project that we could. We could use some ending fund balance. All these things point to the ability to absorb the costs associated with what we've identified as the most important capital project in front of us. So I believe that we should make that decision and either just, either just add it and have it add to the total unfunded, doesn't increase it by all that much in the big scheme of things, or we can fund it through one of the mechanisms I already mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I have tons of overall comments, but I think for brevity right now, I'll stick with the Northwest Sammamish Road non-motorized mobility projects. Just, I think it's a good way to get into some of those projects. So I think first of all, I just, I really appreciate the community feedback of support for this project. And I appreciate the administration listening to that and to councils' feedback as well and going ahead and making changes to the overall projects and funding those first years of design or permitting. I am generally comfortable with, after those first two years, having it be unfunded because I think while the community has been clear that they want safety improvements there, we don't have a sense of what exactly they want. We don't know whether this needs to be a broad-scale widening where we have to acquire property. We don't know whether they would be satisfied with bollards in order to get something sooner to protect those spaces. And so because we don't know the scope of the project, we can't accurately estimate costs. And it's essential to accurately estimate costs in order to put together a funding plan. So I think in general, I would agree with Councilmember Mertz's concept of, hey, this doesn't seem like a future years project, so the cost should be allocated within the six-year plan. But I think perhaps I'm a little bit more comfortable with it being unfunded at this point because I think we need to know more from the community before we get into that funding. And so those are my thoughts on the Northwest Sammamish Road project. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm going to pick up a little bit where Councilmember Walsh left off, I guess, or was going, or or what I was being inspired by her comments. I think that as we look at the, the current plan, the funding and the planned expenditures for 2022 and 2023 should be very solid. We should know where the, where, what we, what we, what we want to do and where those dollars are coming from because we won't have a chance to revise the CIP before those turn into real dollars. When I look at the out years, so 2024 and beyond, I find that those numbers are for planning purposes only and that they inform us of what it is we need to do to fund the things we want to do. And so if, if the Sammamish Road non-motorized is our number one priority, then it should show up as our number one priority in 2024 with the, with the build-out construction there. Because I've, I've heard a lot of people talk about wanting to do that. I've not heard a lot of people talking about wanting to do things between Sunset and Maple on Newport. So I could be wrong, but what I'm hearing from the public in terms of priorities isn't aligned to where I'm seeing the dollars show up in the out years of the plan. So, you know, I'm really embracing the idea that the CIP is a planning document. I think it's actually two planning documents. It's a two-year planning document, which is, okay, this is what we're going to do and this is how we're going to fund it. And then it is a four-year planning document, which is, this is what we'd like to do, and then this is how we think we're going to fund it. But I think the, what you want to do in that second chunk has to take precedence over how you're going to fund it. So you agree on what you want to do, and then we can come back and see, okay, how much of that can we do and how much can we fund? And we true it up then in two years when we're doing the next, the 2024, 2025, or 2024 and whatever six years beyond that is plan. So those, those are my thoughts.
I have a question, Council President Hunt. So in the, in the current recommended, or in the document that we received earlier today that has the changes that are proposed by the administration in response to all of the conversations and community input, there, the status of TR-28 is to have $700,000 in, one, I think it's in 2023. So I'm wondering if you, maybe City Administrator Bob Quitz or whoever is best to answer this question could explain the changes? Because I had thought that previously we had allocated expenditures based on the previous amounts that were estimated for the project. So I think it was 5 million and then 5, 5 million in one out year and 5 million in another out year. And so now, if you could just explain that change and what, what we're currently looking at.
Sure. And I'll let Ms. Moncel take the first crack.
Thank you. So on this particular project, the proposed change from the originally proposed document would leave 2022 as originally proposed. It would add 700,000 into 2023, which would complete, which would aim to complete design by the end of 2023, and then added construction costs as unfunded in 2024 and 2025.
So it would, and it's a little hard for me to do this without seeing the CIP with the revisions, so that's why I'm asking. But so it would have the two years of expected planning funding for the upcoming two years. And then in the two out years, it would have the, the expected amount, which is, I believe, 5 million or 5.5 million in each of those years. And that would be in the expenditures in the plan as the administration is proposing.
That's correct. So we would leave the 1 million that was anticipated for 2022 as funded, then the 700,000 in 2023 as funded, and then the construction costs of, you're correct, it's 5 and 1/2 million in each of 2024 and 2025 as expenditures, but as unfunded.
Thank you. All right. I am not seeing any other comments for round one. I'll give one minute, though. Okay. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thanks. This is Councilmember DeMichele. Thank you, Council President Hunt, for that clarification, because I too am a visual person and I was having a hard time figuring out what was, what was being proposed. But with that clarification, I think it's, I think that we've got a good way of approaching that project. It's, I think there's a larger context here of, we have a lot of worthy projects that need funding, and I appreciate the mayor's proposal to have this capital funding task force and start to look at the projects in context with other projects. I think that is a good approach. And for now, we could get the design work done on, on TR-028. I think that honors the input that we receive from that community at the same time that we are putting it into a larger context of all of the projects that we need to do. So, yeah, I would support, I would support the approach that's been proposed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks. This is Councilmember Walsh. So I wrote down a bunch of other feedback separate from the one project, and I wanted to make sure to get to it. First of all, the information that we got this year in taking this to all of the boards and commissions was just absolutely amazing. I mean, did, just, I love our boards and commissions. They provide such thorough feedback. It gives us information from so many more people's heads than just the seven of us. And I thought that some of that feedback was fantastic for future year CIPs. If it was things like, you know, we might want to include the environmental impacts of something. It's like, oh, my gosh, yes, we absolutely want to do that. Probably not enough to shift this CIP back and go back to the drawing board on that. But yes, we need to do that in future years. Other things were like, hey, please remember that our community priorities are very much environmental and climate change, and that doesn't just need to be reflected in parks projects. It also should be reflected in things like, hey, when we're replacing the HVAC or the roof, are there better environmental ways? Love that feedback. And then there were a few that were specific to project discussions or specific projects, which I think when we go to discuss those projects and we're looking at funding them, yes, absolutely take that feedback. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of the feedback that we got and say that it is absolutely incredibly useful. My thoughts on the Lakeside DA is that I feel pretty comfortable with using that funding for some of these smaller project ideas in order to move the needle forward. That being said, I'm completely comfortable, since this CIP is just a planning document, it's not a budget, to take a moment, keep it out of the CIP, have that little community conversation or discussion of what are our options? What could we do with this? And then come to a decision and use that in budgeting round. I think the upside is if we decide to use it, we can fund more projects. The downside is if we decide not to do it, we're at the same place that we are right now. So I think that's fantastic. And then finally, I completely support the mayor's capital funding task force to explore options. I'm not really comfortable with a TBD. I, I don't think it's necessarily the right place for us with this right, with this mix of projects. And so I, I really appreciate being willing to have more of a community conversation in the world scope that we are right now. You know, we're in COVID. I haven't heard a lot of people talking about traffic. And yeah, that's going to change over time, but we also have to recognize what our situation is and be, be able to address it based on the feedback that we're hearing. So very much appreciate that. And those are my thoughts on the CIP. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Council President. Just to close out thoughts on the TR-28, I continue to not understand why this argument that because we don't know exactly what it's going to cost, we shouldn't list it as an expenditure. I, you know, I read off a half dozen of the 15 items that we have here that have unfunded expenditures, including, I'll just pick as an example, PKO43 Pickering Barn Park. We have, with 4.1 million in unfunded expenditures, we have no idea what that'll look like. We have design money, but then we have 3.6 million for 2027 of construction expenditures on that project. So I don't understand at all how we will have 15 projects that we hold to one standard and then the project that many of us say is the most important project for the city holding to a very different, what seems arbitrary, standard. So as I mentioned last time, I won't be supporting the CIP in next week unless we fund TR-028. I think it's a betrayal of what we said we would do for the community and feel really strongly about it. On an unrelated matter, TR-22 and TR-23 Newport Way, I had concerns about that two years ago and I have concerns today. What I hear is there's $41 million of future year expenditures, setting aside what we've got in 2022, 2027. This is a huge amount of money, and I've yet to hear the benefit that our community is going to get from those huge amounts of money. And I have concerns about what will be our contribution to that $41 million. I hear that we might have to give 4.5 million back, but that's a small amount of money if, depending on what we're being held to in the future. So I believe we're being asked to write a check now for, you want to talk about not knowing expenses, right? Not knowing what the financial implications are or something. So I've, I had concerns two years ago about TR-022 and TR-023 when we asked earlier, a couple of weeks ago, about what was in those packages. I mean, there's already a sidewalk. I mean, there's already a sidewalk on the north side of Newport west of 900. It's a good sidewalk. There's never going to be a completed sidewalk on the south side along that same. There may be, there may be sections of it due to the geography of the hillside. There's never going to be a continuous sidewalk. There's already a turn lane to northbound 900 from eastbound Newport. So I, you know, like I said, I've already said I'm not going to be supporting the CIP if we don't come up with the funding for TRO 28. But I have a, I have an additional concern around, that I, that I, I think at least one of my fellow councilmembers may share, around the definitions of TRO 22 and 23, and the financial commitments that we'll be making by moving forward with these projects. As my old boss, Jeff Bezos, used to say, and I've said before, the hardest decision to make is the one that has a large sunk cost in it already. And this, these two projects seem like the poster children for existing sunk costs and potentially much more bills to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking at the chat, so I, I'm not seeing other council members at this time, so I will go ahead and make my comments. Firstly, I did appreciate having the notes from the different boards and commissions that gave us feedback. I think that is helpful to our process, and they identified specific projects and things that helped me sort of think through the CIP from a different angle. So I think that that was definitely a positive addition to our process for the CIP this year, and also the table with the checkmarks for the different criteria, including the life safety and the environmental issues, et cetera. That was also really positive, and I think helped me organize my thoughts better on the CIP overall. So I noticed in some of the comments from the boards and commissions, I think there's a need to explain the benefits of some of the projects, especially some of the bigger, more expensive projects. One of them that came up was the I-90 crossing. I think the connection with the sound transit, with light rail planning, I think we need to explain, explain that one in a way that we explain the benefits, because it is a very, very big cost in the end, and it's also a future-looking project. And so I think there's, there's several other projects where there were questions that indicate that I think we need to explain the context around some of those projects more clearly. I, I have concerns around not funding the North, the TR 28. I think we'll probably, so the expenditures will be in the plan, as far as I understand it, for TR, for TR 28, for the years where we expect we would be able to do construction. So I, I appreciate that it will be in the plan. I think we'll probably, in two years' time, the council, at that time, will have to come up with that funding. But I think, I think we just need to commit to that project and getting it done in the, the time that we can. It sounds like, from the city administrator's explanation, that it would take two years, also because Washita is working in the area, two years to do the planning. So if that's the case, then that gives us that time to do, get the funding in place. But we just, I think, need to be very clear that we are going to need that funding on that timeline, and it will be coming up shortly. And then also, one other thing that came up during some of our earlier public comments is the comparison between the Newport project and some of our other neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, so Mountain Olympus, not having a sidewalk at all. And I think that, I think looking at that in the next couple of years, looking at that project, maybe scoping would be good. I think there, I think we heard both from the commissions and also from some of the public comments that we need to look at the balance of new forward-looking projects and projects that have really been on the minds of community members for a long time. And so those long-term projects, I think, are, are really important. I do think considering them separately as a, as a need that we've known about for a long time would be a beneficial part of this process. And so, you know, some of the areas where they don't have a sidewalk at all would be good to do some scoping to consider whether that would be something feasible to add to the CIP. Those are my general comments. Looking at the chat, see if anybody has any further comments. I think we've heard from everyone. Oh, actually, does anyone have any further comments or direction?
Well, then, Council President, members of the council will be back next week on the 17th for, for our final action. We'll make the adjustments that have been really described last week. We'll have that incorporated into a revised document, and it'll be on for record business. So I appreciate your thoughts and comments. And as I mentioned, the mayor's plan is to move forward with a citizen task force, and I'm sure she'll have more information about those thoughts next week at the council meeting. Well, thank you for this evening.
Thank you. I do have a question also on the action. Would the action that we take include this task force? Would that be part of the action that we take, or would that be a separate action?
My guess is it'll be a separate action. I think the mayor will just come with more details for the meeting next week.
Okay. Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments. Okay, so with that, I think we will close out this item. Just make sure nobody has any last comments. Okay. So then, the only other item on our agenda for this evening is Good of the Order. So if any council members have any items for Good of the Order, please indicate in the chat. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So if there, there being no further business, we are adjourned at 8:54 PM.